...for which it stands, one nation under God, in the rightful liberty and justice of the world. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 7th, 2015 meeting of the Patroville's Attorney Board of Appeals. First application will be an adjourned application, fourteen dash two oh, for closed stories to Burrito, nine eleven railroad avenue, six to risk for you, a special permit for nightclub slants, reparations pursuant to four thirty-five twenty-one A one. Subject preface is located in the D three business zone. Members of the board, members of the public IDQ about this application, please step aside, and the home now will be shared again. Tom Tom?
This is Tom. He had John Bojek. Yeah.
Yeah.
How are you, Steve?
All right, everybody's good. The applicant's representatives are here?
Yes.
Come in, hold on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mr. Chmarco, I represent the applicant. I have our architect, Mr. Lorio.
Sorry.
The last time that the application was here, there was still one item we were waiting for, I believe, which I have got a copy, I don't know if the rest of the board has gotten a copy, you were going to give us a breakdown of your security, your security detail. Did everybody get it?
Yeah.
I got it. There was some. I know, I did get a copy. Give me a copy. There are a couple of things that the board would like to get clarified. One is, the last floor plan that was submitted to us was dated in March of two thousand twelve. Based on my discussions and testimony, the interior has changed. Balling alley is no longer there, tables no longer there, we're told. So we would need to get an actual architect to give us an actual floor plan, the first floor and basement, what's actually there.
Okay. It was submitted back when we did the changes to the building.
Yeah. I'm sorry, James, I thought it was building design. The plans should, you have, should be reflective of the removal of the bowling alley, which is the only significant change that downstairs and the rest of the first floor had remained the same. I have the report from our code enforcement that the tables are no longer there.
Which area? The dining area near the center?
The dining room area has always been there, they're movable chairs. They're movable. And they move them, the headliners pick them up at night. That's been like that since they.
That's not all the way to the difference in the rest.
Yes. Okay, this is Village Patroville Building and Housing Department. It's dated December eleventh of two thousand fourteen. Inspector went out, entered the Emporium for the owner, was approached by a young lady who greeted us, and saw that there were no tables in the dining area parentheses restaurant. She informed me that they no longer serve food. She said the restaurant is gone. So, that was one of your employees that was educating one of our inspectors. So that's why we would like an accurate floor plan of what's actually there or not there. The wall with the basement.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know what young lady he spoke to, but we do serve food quite often. There's a full-service catering menu, there's pizza every night that the clubs, the nightclubs open, and certainly every Friday night. So there's food being produced in that kitchen all the time. The date that he walked in, for whatever reason, if I may refer to this, I don't know if this is an accurate.
What's the date on that?
Date on this.
I mean, I am March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth. The dining, the dining area has movable, well, except for the line for perimeter, there are benches lining the perimeter, and the tables and the chairs are movable. So depending on the particular event, we could remove the chairs from that section. A good example would be New Year's Eve, when that whole area was tables and chairs. In fact, we sold, how many tables did we sell New Year's Eve? Forty-five tables throughout the, throughout the event style. So you could at the night, when you have a particular band on, we have the ability to cuss a room in half with a curtain if it's not a big night, and you would take the tables and chairs out of that section for that particular event.
I understand, I know what they're catering myself another year.
Right.
But based on your own testimony, and revised, I have written on here revised plan dated in December, I'm sorry, March of two thousand twelve, still shows the bowling alleys, which based on your testimony were gone, and all these tables, and I have a report that says there were no tables and no more food served. So we definitely are requiring an updated certified floor plan once there, the first floor.
That's, that's no problem, Mr. Chairman, we'll certainly be happy to get that.
Because nothing's changed.
Yeah, I, I understand, I would caution code enforcement to speak to employee, you know, employees that.
Well, he did, he did ask the senior owner and young woman.
If you want to put a note.
Or a matter, you should ask for a matter.
If you want to put a note on your drawings indicating what you just said, that they're movable.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think the question is, you say you serve food, can I go in there tomorrow night and have dinner?
Tomorrow?
Like a restaurant?
We're not open.
Oh, in general, I think he means in general, can you go there and have dinner?
Can I, can I go there and have dinner?
Okay, can I answer this?
Yes.
All right. What we do currently is that depending on the particular event, since we do so many different events, different genres of music, will dictate whether our kitchens open, and it'll depend on what menu we're serving. For instance, country people and certain bands, we provide a full-service restaurant. So that means that there's a large menu that you would find at any restaurant. There's smaller events, like rock shows and stuff like that, we do a smaller pub-style menu. And then there's certain events, like a Saturday, where we just do pizza. So depending on the particular event, will dictate the particular menu. If you want catering, yes, we do have a catering menu that we use for apartments or suite sixteen's that are standard, and have stations that we use for catering. But based on a particular event, the people that are coming will dictate the particular menu that we're going to put out.
I understand that, but looking at the plans here.
If you want to answer your question as far as staffing, we hire, we have full kitchen staff on duty every week.
All right, it says dining area hundred seats. But dining area is only when you have an event. I remember when you opened, I went there, had a free dinner, and it was very good. But I understand, and I haven't been there since, but this doesn't exist anymore.
That's not true.
No, it's like, you can't go and have dinner.
Not every night, sir. You're right.
It's not a walk-in restaurant.
So, Mr. Chairman, so if Tony Bennett's playing one night, you're going to serve dinner. If Metallica's there another night, you're probably not going to serve dinner.
Correct. Depending on the demographics of person, will dictate whether they're going to buy dinner or not. So a younger crowd is not buying dinner. We're not going to put payroll on and purchase food and lose money if it's a younger demographics that's not there to purchase food. They might be there for a band. For instance, we do a lot of young events with young pop stars that are coming out. Those events, we just keep the pink pizza window open because you're dealing with younger kids or parents that are not going to sit down and are not going to hire staff, a new staff, a kitchen staff, to facilitate a large restaurant for that.
Okay, I'm saying this on your.
We checked, we changed it since then, Mr. Gordon. So you're right in that sense, we don't do the same thing.
Okay.
We've adjusted as per our, our ability.
Which you got to do when you're doing this, I understand.
Exactly.
And thank you for mentioning that.
And we might bring the restaurant back, we have that versatility.
So just to clarify that, basically, originally we had approved a special permit for a combination of uses. One of those uses was a restaurant.
Correct.
Basically, you're not a restaurant, you're an event venue that has a full kitchen and does food when, according to the event.
Like I said.
Like, there's no night you're open that you just have a restaurant menu without an event going on, basically, at this point.
At the current stage, yes, but, you know, in the future, if we decide to do something different with the venue, I would still like to do.
I mean, it's not that, it's just, we just need to know what we're.
That's correct. And, and just to, just to take that, that point one step further, we've had entertained, recently entertained, you know, contracting with different restaurant groups to come in there and build a full-service restaurant. It may not be what fits there now, because, you know, the, the different events, as this will be described, why the versatility of the restaurant? We could put one in tomorrow and open up.
So you're seeking approval for a restaurant to still meet your company's uses, though right now, the business climate has not allowed you to support that.
It would be appropriate to do that, yes.
We're still, to answer your question though, we are still using it as a restaurant that is, in those day, on those certain.
On those nights, right, but, but like I said, there's, if Tony Bennett's not singing, and I want to get some pasta, I'm not going to come to.
You might, you might not be able to get that.
Right.
But when we originally opened too, it wasn't open every day as a restaurant, it was only open up for.
It was proposed before or to be that way, correct? Or maybe not every single day, it's not every restaurant is open every single day or week, but essentially, it was a combination.
It was a combination based on the venue or what you had for that. When you have your architect give us an updated floor plan, if you could also update the fire evacuation plan, being the floor plan has changed and things have been moved all around, we want to get an updated one.
If I can speak to that, you had mentioned that the plan that you were looking at, I think I just saw it, has the bowling alley. That was not the plan that was submitted with this application?
No, that was a plan from two thousand eleven.
Right, that was the bowling alley.
It also, in March two thousand twelve, does not show bowling alleys.
Okay.
But it has a whole bunch of tables that we're told are there, so.
Well, banquet seating, is that what you're looking at?
No, you're talking about this area. Are you talking about in the center or in replacing with a bowling alley, what's that?
Both. Bowling alley, I know that was revised in two thousand eleven, then I have a revision in March two thousand twelve, where the bowling alley door shows now a service area, we got dining area down the bottom, we got tables spread out.
The area, my, I guess my question is, the area that they didn't, or that they said there were no seats in, which area is that?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
Okay.
I'm going by the inspector's report. Last time I was in this building was for Chinese auction, when it was still Knights of Columbus, so I have no idea what that building looks like.
Okay.
But I'm getting conflicting reports, you're saying one thing, inspector's saying another.
If we can have the inspector, you know, we can make appointments on.
But I mean, if you're saying this drawing from two thousand twelve is accurate, it's not going to take that much for your architect, put a new date and put a fire evacuation plan on.
Yep. Take care of it.
Thank you. Is your, the village wants somebody to go in there with your product? Carol, to make sure we understand.
I can understand.
Peter or Raff? Do you want to send somebody to pick it up?
You got plans?
We only want to go with the towel, please, not.
On Friday, it's a good night, you know. I mean, if we're open, and the tables and chairs are most of the time there, that must have been a.
You got a board wants to go see Metallica.
I wish we did have Metallica.
Yeah, that was so an example.
How would, how would you like that noted on the drawing? I mean, you know, I'm not at the place, I never actually been there when it was open or not.
Would you, this area will.
You know, should I, would you prefer that I show the seating there? I mean, my client is telling me that there is seating there, obviously you have the code enforcement report that said there wasn't, there isn't seating there. I mean, how would you like that handled on the drawing, is really what I'm asking.
I would like to see it drawn the way that it is most of the time. I understand you move things around depending on the venue.
Yeah.
It's either you're going to have tables for one venue or you're not going to have tables.
You have tables subject to removal depending upon the, the event, something like that.
Okay.
And then the access, the exit plan.
Fire evacuation.
Fire evacuation. Fire, but, yeah, please. We have everything else? The, the, yeah, the applicant is again, both.
Was it?
All right, and you know we did not.
I do thank you for sending me out the, the breaking hours. Thank you for seeing that. Any members of the board have any other questions or comments? Any member in the public have any questions? Yes, sir.
Maybe. John Bojek. Hi. First of all, I want to begin by saying I approve of this, I support this application. I think that overall, the Emporium has been an asset to the Village of Patro. I, I think a lot of people I've spoken to feel that same way. It doesn't mean there are issues about it, but I can't, I'm going to advocate it closed down. And before I go a little bit further, I just want to make sure, I just want to double check, because this is the third meeting, I want to make double check to see whether or not has the board gotten ambulance reports still from the Patroville ambulance group that have been requested in the past?
We have gotten a copy of a FOIL request dated January seventh of two thousand fifteen. We just received that tonight, and we do have quite a few entries from, let's see, from, it was a full page of just all incidents with copies delivered. But like I said, it was just given to us tonight, so I don't have a lot of time to review it.
Okay, well, that's one of my, that's one of my questions. I had actually looked at the file for the, for this application, and when I looked at it about two weeks ago, no such reports were in the file, but I'm glad that you have them now, although I haven't had a chance to look at them myself. The second question, what about code reports? Have they, have they also been now provided to the zoning board?
This is a copy of both from code enforcement and from Suffolk County PD.
You, so you now have the police reports as well?
Well, I don't think there's actual police reports, but there's references to them, whether they were answered by Village Patro or Suffolk County. Suffolk County reports are not in this Village of Patro.
Now, are you referring to the ambulance reports that are code referring to these different sources?
No, it is from log entries from Suffolk County PD or code enforcement, it's not from the ambulance, I have not received that yet.
All right, so there's nothing from the ambulance yet. Now, when I made a request for the code enforcement reports two weeks ago, I was told yesterday they have not yet been prepared, but perhaps they have been announced, is that the case?
I don't have any copies of them, does anybody else have a copy?
No, you has what you referred to, you just got that.
We just got this. Take a look.
No, I'm not sure.
You just got that.
All right, so, so what you have basically is the ambulance, or the code enforcement.
We do not have any ambulance reports yet, no.
All right, so it's code enforcement, no, no reports from the police per se, except for those that are referred to by code enforcement.
Correct.
Right. So I'm going to urge, if you have time, so that's the other thing, I'm not just having to show the clock is on this application, how much time you actually have, but, you know, you're the decision makers here. These public safety issues, I know you've been looking at them, trying to understand what they are and why not. You know, Mr. Chmarco has raised an interesting point, in some cases perhaps the police have identified the Emporium as a location for incidents not related to the Emporium. It's something that, it's an interesting point that needs to be excluded or included if that's the case. But I don't see how you can make the decision to that. Resources of information is completely ambulance court, the police department, and our own code enforcement agency. So I'm going to urge that, whatever time you got left in this application.
It's still ongoing.
It's open, it's open, so. The clock hasn't started ticking, we have not closed the application.
All right, well, then I'm glad, because, you know, again, I have no bias against the Emporium, but I do have a bias for safety. Any, any organization, any club, any business, whatever, should be operating as safely as possible. And, and that doesn't, that doesn't exclude the possibility that things could have happened that they have since learned to do better. But I think you need to look at the whole record, including the incident that was recently reported in the newspaper involving the owner of the Emporium himself, where he has a lawsuit against the Suffolk County Police. I read those accounts in the press, they seem very disturbing, and I, and they might relate to the issue that you're looking at tonight, which is security. That police report in particular needs to be discovered, I think, because we have the owner of the Emporium claiming that, if I read his article, the article correctly, police brutality, but that might have come into action from some incident which occurred involving three individuals engaging with security forces of the club, violent, violent altercations occurring in the club prior to the intervention of security. And you can look at that story many different ways. I don't know how you're going to do that without actually seeing the facts. And the facts are not in the newspaper article, it's in that police report. And I think that's the best evidence of what happens, you got to find it.
Well, I mean, there is a lawsuit on, and I'm sure, one of the things to be determined in that lawsuit would be what actually happened, so it's hard for us to, we really can't make an independent assessment as to.
Well, that's true, but there is a police report.
Yeah.
And there is something to be said. In fact, if I remember that report, the Newsday report correctly, despite Mr. Chmarco's claims in the Newsday article, that club was closed for six hours that day. So the club was closed for some reason, that might be in the report. You know, I don't think we can, I don't think you can do this, well, it might, it isn't there, it could be there. And since you're making a FOIL request, it would include that date, I need to do it that way. So, to do the job correctly, completely, as completely as you possibly can, there are some sources of information that I think needs to be obtained. Again, I'm not, I'm not biased against the club, I'm only biased in the direction of getting the facts. I also want to point out two other things, too. With respect to Mr. Chmarco's last appearance here, there was a study about sound at the club, and I got a copy of that from your record. So, you know, I'm not a sound expert, maybe I'm misreading the information in there, but what I'm seeing from looking at it is, take an average of a high, an average of a low, and you come down to a point below the code, which is seventy. But on the, on many of those dates, there are instances where music is over seventy, they were just averaged down, so they came within the, within the seventy limit. People don't experience, don't experience averages, they experience the highs, the peaks. And I actually, I'm quite surprised, knowing that, the way that club is set up, I'm surprised that it even reached past seventy on some of these dates, because it's almost like a fortress. That'd be pretty loud inside. But my point about this is, we got a, we do have a community of people that are living in that apartment house complex nearby, just like any other residence, they need to be protected as much as possible, and if the club can crank down the music just a little bit, I think that would satisfy the problems, or I think that would solve the problem, I don't think that would be too much. If you look at these figures, I'm not an expert, maybe I'm wrong, but it appears to be that there are instances where they did peak over the seventy limit. If it's within their capacity to do less than that, I would urge that, board also urges them to do the same, regardless of whether or not they got any complaints from people who might not know about their rights. So, I think justice needs to be done in that case for the tabloids and people. Other than that, that's it. I, again, I'll go back to where I started, the Emporium is part of the renaissance of the village, it's one of the biggest places in the village, at eleven hundred people, I think it is capacity. It's part of our growing entertainment scene. I've been there myself, I've had good times when I've been there, I've never seen any violence in that club, but that doesn't mean it doesn't happen on other occasions, but my own personal experience has been nothing but positive. So I hope that these issues do get worked out in the best way. And I'm glad that there's a two-year permit, because that gives this board the opportunity to come back and look at these issues again in two years if that's the case, which I think it needs to do.
Yeah, we, any, right, any permit, we can set the timeframe for the, for that permit left to use. So we're not locked in at two years.
So you're locked in at one year?
We're not locked in at any time, at least we have to thank that assessment.
Oh, well, I'm going to speak on that, I think it should be a narrow limit, because look at what's happened. We know that they didn't apply for a removal when they should have. We know in fact that actually they applied to expand their club, instead of complying with the zoning board request, they were asked to expand their club. I think some scrutiny is required for that reason alone, so a narrow limit would be a good idea. And after that, if there are no further issues, you know, let them have as long as they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the public, before you get to the application? How many things may come up? I want to enter into the record in the email that our zoning board had received, dated November thirty of two thousand fourteen. It starts, "For your information, I had a study conducted of our patient care reports, this generated from Mr. John Rockoff, sent to Carol and to Nick. I had a study conducted of our patient care reports generated over a ten-month period from January first of two thousand fourteen through October two thousand fourteen. Through the period, there were twenty-seven calls we responded to for sick or injured patients stemming from operations at Nine Railroad Avenue. Most of these patients were escorted out of the premises and some found on the grounds for wandering in the immediate area, but all of these patients stated they were a patron of the establishment at Nine Railroad Avenue. The nature of these calls revolved around two overwhelming causes, eleven assaults or traumatic injury, ten cases of overdoses, which meant alcohol, drugs, respiratory, or cardiac arrest. The remainder of the calls ranged from false calls to sick or seizures to unconscious, et cetera. It is interesting to note that the establishment has generated the most ambulance calls for our agency, other than any other similar to Main Street establishments by a wide margin. Since the report was tabulated, we have been to at least six more calls at Nine Railroad Avenue for the same types of causes, three times on November twenty-sixth. Also, it should be noted that in the first few months of when initial operations began at this location, the venue had generated over forty calls for our agency over a period of ninety days or so, under the event. Just wanted to add that into the record."
Do you want me to address anything? Yeah. Well, just, I think Mr. Lorio would like me to address briefly the subject that came up in, with respect to the Newsday art, that that incident was, happened actually a year ago. And it's an unfortunate incident, and our, our policy is to cooperate with the police by the district attorney's office because of his actions as an, as an individual, and that's what spurred the lawsuit. It's just, it has nothing to do with police department or police brutality and so on and so forth, it has to do with the person's action and then the police reacting to his call, so. And Mr. Lorio was just standing there finding his own business that night. So, that being said, and the noise, we know that there hasn't been any noise complaints since we opened, not, not one. And we welcome any opportunity to have code enforcement come down and hold on to the noise meter, we did our own study, I've done one, it's, it's pretty, pretty tight with respect to the noise. At least one thing we have. And as far as the, the ambulance and the police calls, I would attribute that, we're the largest venue in town, we hold the most people, the law of averages would dictate that we're going to have the most police calls and the most ambulance calls, you're just big.
I mean, for the record, when is your COO actually? I think it's nine hundred, isn't it?
Thirteen hundred. It's over thirteen hundred.
Yeah.
So I, you know, we do, fortunately, we were successful, and we do have, you know, over a thousand people in there at any given time, and things happen, and, you know, the police department does a great job, and the ambulance service does a great job, and we're fortunate to have that, so.
Thank you for elaborating and explaining that incident, however, that really hasn't been bearing on what you're looking for.
I'm just going to, it was put on the record, so we.
Thank you, thank you for that. Does the applicant have anything else to add?
That's, that's all, we'll get the board everything it needs.
How much time would you like to get all of that together?
As far as the drawings, we can have them to you this week.
Okay, so we'll put it back on the calendar for our next meeting?
That's fine.
Is that, sound good, everybody? And code's board?
Twenty-first, twenty-first.
So is the board satisfied we got all the outstanding information we want from other agencies?
Well, as well as been done, we're waiting to get back some information, hopefully we'll get it from the police department.
Mr. Chairman, should we set up a meeting?
Is that, is that fair, everybody? Sorry. And code enforcement.
Twenty-first, twenty-first.
Is the board satisfied we got all the outstanding information we want from other agencies?
Well, as far as it's been done, we'll wait, we'll get back some information, hopefully we'll get it from the police department.
Mr. Chairman, should we set up a meeting, uh, code enforcement walkthrough at any, at a night where, where venues open to inspect and maybe clarify that for, for the, you know? For building, building department? Yeah, that's, that's fine, you can call us or stop by. Just want to have one of us there at any time.
Yeah, we don't want that, um.
Don't want the same.
The same female.
Mostly that one.
So, Mr. Chairman, there was a FOIL placed, what, by the village, can you?
It's what we were handed tonight.
Who, who made the, who made the.
So, who made the FOIL request, the village?
Mr. Bojai, Bojai. He made the FOIL, one, on the packet we were handed tonight when we walked in.
So, the village has not foiled county police?
Yeah, you foiled the information that we have, correct, that's, that's our.
So, so then, has anyone foiled the information from Suffolk County Police?
This board, we haven't.
Yeah, we were going to fill it with.
Any of the incidents that happened in this timeframe, I believe, went through code enforcement, and then they just put down whether they responded, and if they did, we have the report. If Suffolk County responded, they have a code here. But again, it came to us when we walked in, so, no, it's not time to even look at it, really.
I guess all I was trying to get at is if we were waiting on a, for a, for a day, these two weeks would not be enough for the time to, so that was all, it was just a time question.
Hey, any members have any other questions? Uh, we take a motion on January twenty-first is going to.
When you make a motion to adjourn it? January twenty-first.
Would I give you enough time, gentlemen?
January twenty-first?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, will you adjourn this application until January twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. Burton, we have a second. Just adjourn to January twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.